Thank you for the time. I'll come over to the office.
Yeah.
I'll come over to the office.
Yeah.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.[135.11][135.11][S01. Thank you.[136.11][136.11][S01. Thank you.[137.11][137.11][S01. Thank you.[138.11][138.11][S01. Thank you.[139.11][139.11][S01. Thank you.[140.11][140.11][S01. Thank you.[141.11][141.11][S01. Thank you.[142.11][142.11][S01. Thank you.[143.11][143.11][S01. Thank you.[144.11][144.11][S01. Thank you.[145.11][145.11][S01. Thank you.[146.11][146.11][S01. Thank you.[147.11][147.11][S01. Thank you.[148.11][148.11][S01. Thank you.[149.11][149.11][S01. Thank you.[150.11][150.11][S01. Thank you.[151.11][151.11][S01. Thank you.[152.11][152.11][S01. Thank you.[153.11][153.11][S01. Thank you.[154.11][154.11][S01. Thank you.[155.11][155.11][S01. Thank you.[156.11][156.11][S01. Thank you.[157.11][157.11][S01. Thank you.[158.11][158.11][S01. Thank you.[159.11][159.11][S01. Thank you.[160.11][160.11][S01. Thank you.[161.11][161.11][S01. Thank you.[162.11][162.11][S01. Thank you.[163.11][163.11][S01. Thank you.[164.11][164.11][S01. Thank you.[165.11][165.11][S01. Thank you.[166.11][166.11][S01. Thank you.[167.11][167.11][S01. Thank you.[168.11][168.11][S01. Thank you.[169.11][169.11][S01. Thank you.[170.11][170.11][S01. Thank you.[171.11][171.11][S01. Thank you.[172.11][172.11][S01. Thank you.[173.11][173.11][S01. Thank you.[174.11][174.11][S01. Thank you.[175.11][175.11][S01. Thank you.[176.11][176.11][S01. Thank you.[177.11][177.11][S01. Thank you.[178.11][178.11][S01. Thank you.[179.11][179.11][S01. Thank you.[180.11][180.11][S01. Thank you.[181.11][181.11][S01. Thank you.[182.11][182.11][S01. Thank you.[183.11][183.11][S01. Thank you.[184.11][184.11][S01. Thank you.[185.11][185.11][S01. Thank you.[186.11][186.11][S01. Thank you.[187.11][187.11][S01. Thank you.[188.11][188.11][S01. Thank you.[189.11][189.11][S01. Thank you.[190.11][190.11][S01. Thank you.[191.11][191.11][S01. Thank you.[192.11][192.11][S01. Thank you.[193.11][193.11][S01. Thank you.[194.11][194.11][S01. Thank you.[195.11][195.11][S01. Thank you.[196.11][196.11][S01. Thank you.[197.11][197.11][S01. Thank you.[198.11][198.11][S01. Thank you.[199.11][199.11][S01. Thank you.[200.11][200.11][S01. Thank you.[201.11][201.11][S01. Thank you.[202.11][202.11][S01. Thank you.[203.11][203.11][S01. Thank you.[204.11][204.11][S01. Thank you.[205.11][205.11][S01. Thank you.[206.11][206.11][S01. Thank you.[207.11][207.11][S01. Thank you.[208.11][208.11][S01. Thank you.[209.11][209.11][S01. Thank you.[210.11][210.11][S01. Thank you.[211.11][211.11][S01. Thank you.[212.11][212.11][S01. Thank you.[213.11][213.11][S01. Thank you.[214.11][214.11][S01. Thank you.[215.11][215.11][S01. Thank you.[216.11][216.11][S01. Thank you.[217.11][217.11][S01. Thank you.[218.11][218.11][S01. Thank you.[219.11][219.11][S01. Thank you.[220.11][220.11][S01. Thank you.[221.11][221.11][S01. Thank you.[222.11][222.11][S01. Thank you.[223.11][223.11][S01. Thank you.[224.11][224.11][S01. Thank you.[225.11][225.11][S01. Thank you.[226.11][226.11][S01. Thank you.[227.11][227.11][S01. Thank you.[228.11][228.11][S01. Thank you.[229.11][229.11][S01. Thank you.[230.11][230.11][S01. Thank you.[231.11][231.11][S01. Thank you.[232.11][232.11][S01. Thank you.[233.11][233.11][S01. Thank you.[234.11][234.11][S01. Thank you.[235.11][235.11][S01. Thank you.[236.11][236.11][S01. Thank you.[237.11][237.11][S01. Thank you.[238.11][238.11][S01. Thank you.[239.11][239.11][S01. Thank you.[240.11][240.11][S01. Thank you.[241.11][241.11][S01. Thank you.[242.11][242.11][S01. Thank you.[243.11][243.11][S01. Thank you.[244.11][244.11][S01. Thank you.[245.11][245.11][S01. Thank you.[246.11][246.11][S01. Thank you.[247.11][247.11][S01. Thank you.[248.11][248.11][S01. Thank you.[249.11][249.11][S01. Thank you.[250.11][250.11][S01. Thank you.[251.11][251.11][S01. Thank you.[252.11][252.11][S01. Thank you.[253.11][253.11][S01. Thank you.[254.11][254.11][S01. Thank you.[255.11][255.11][S01. Thank you.[256.11][256.11][S01. Thank you.[257.11][257.11][S01. Thank you.[258.11][258.11][S01. Thank you.[259.11][259.11][S01. Thank you.[260.11][260.11][S01. Thank you.[261.11][261.11][S01. Thank you.[262.11][262.11][S01. Thank you.[263.11][263.11][S01. Thank you.[264.11][264.11][S01. Thank you.[265.11][265.11][S01. Thank you.[266.11][266.11][S01. Thank you.[267.11][267.11][S01. Thank you.[268.11][268.11][S01. Thank you.[269.11][269.11][S01. Thank you.[270.11][270.11][S01. Thank you.[271.11][271.11][S01. Thank you.[272.11][272.11][S01. Thank you.[273.11][273.11][S01. Thank you.[274.11][274.11][S01. Thank you.[275.11][275.11][S01. Thank you.[276.11][276.11][S01. Thank you.[277.11][277.11][S01. Thank you.[278.11][278.11][S01. Thank you.[279.11][279.11][S01. Thank you.[280.11][280.11][S01. Thank you.[281.11][281.11][S01. Thank you.[282.11][282.11][S01. Thank you.[283.11][283.11][S01. Thank you.[284.11][284.11][S01. Thank you.[285.11][285.11][S01. Thank you.[286.11][286.11][S01. Thank you.[287.11][287.11][S01. Thank you.[288.11][288.11][S01. Thank you.[289.11][289.11][S01. Thank you.[290.11][290.11][S01. Thank you.[291.11][291.11][S01. Thank you.[292.11][292.11][S01. Thank you.[293.11][293.11][S01. Thank you.[294.11][294.11][S01. Thank you.[295.11][295.11][S01. Thank you.[296.11][296.11][S01. Thank you.[297.11][297.11][S01. Thank you.[298.11][298.11][S01. Thank you.[299.11][299.11][S01. Thank you.[300.11][300.11][S01. Thank you.[301.11][301.11][S01. Thank you.[302.11][302.11][S01. Thank you.[303.11][303.11][S01. Thank you.[304.11][304.11][S01. Thank you.[305.11][305.11][S01. Thank you.[306.11][306.11][S01. Thank you.[307.11][307.11][S01. Thank you.[308.11][308.11][S01. Thank you.[309.11][309.11][S01. Thank you.[310.11][310.11][S01. Thank you.[311.11][311.11][S01. Thank you.[312.11][312.11][S01. Thank you.[313.11][313.11][S01. Thank you.[314.11][314.11][S01. Thank you.[315.11][315.11][S01. Thank you.[316.11][316.11][S01. Thank you.[317.11][317.11][S01. Thank you.[318.11][318.11][S01. Thank you.[319.11][319.11][S01. Thank you.[320.11][320.11][S01. Thank you.[321.11][321.11][S01. Thank you.[322.11][322.11][S01. Thank you.[323.11][323.11][S01. Thank you.[324.11][324.11][S01. Thank you.[325.11][325.11][S01. Thank you.[326.11][326.11][S01. Thank you.[327.11][327.11][S01. Thank you.[328.11][328.11][S01. Thank you.[329.11][329.11][S01. Thank you.[330.11][330.11][S01. Thank you.[331.11][331.11][S01. Thank you.[332.11][332.11][S01. Thank you.[333.11][333.11][S01. Thank you.[334.11][334.11][S01. Thank you.[335.11][335.11][S01. Thank you.[336.11][336.11][S01. Thank you.[337.11][337.11][S01. Thank you.[338.11][338.11][S01. Thank you.[339.11][339.11][S01. Thank you.[340.11][340.11][S01. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the housekeeping items? Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment on that. For the benefit of the public, I just want to reiterate that, as I've said before, the housekeeping items are common courtesies. And we just expect people to have a little common courtesy when they're addressing a city council in a little civil manner and civil discourse. Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open-for-Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Lona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonamalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0304. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. N-I-X-L-E dot com. The Kattati Farmers Market begins June 4th and runs every Thursday through August 27th, starting at 4:30 p.m. in La Plaza Park. The Kattati Kids' Day Parade and Festival will be held on July 11th. For more information on this free family event, go to kattatkidsday.org. And now, we have a proclamation to recognize Spanky's Bar for 30 years in business in Kattati. I'd like to welcome up the current owners of Spanky's. And you don't have to stand if you don't want to.
That's right.
So, is there anything you'd like to address, Kevin?
Well, nothing specifically, other than the fact that we will be celebrating on Saturday. Food starts at 4:00, band starts at 9:00, everyone's invited. And I know that, one thing sort of off-topic, I know that myself and many other citizens don't generally make it to the meetings, but on behalf of me and the ones that I've talked to, we appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you. I don't know if the council wanted to make any comments prior to reading a proclamation?
Be happy. We can't let him go without making him be a little uncomfortable.
It's been a while since we got you in front of us. I think this is one of the favorite things for any of us, when we get a chance to thank the businesses in the community, especially the longstanding businesses that have been with us so many years, are part and parcel of the identity that people have of Kattati. And this is particularly a fun one for me right now, knowing Mr. Ginger, having grown up in my neighborhood, remembering him as just one of the neighborhood gang of kids running around, and knowing that there were a lot of career paths you could have taken, particularly after passing the bar. But your interest in staying here and being part and parcel of this community really made a difference, so I appreciate that. I congratulate you for all the work, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Councilman Lawson?
Yeah, because he started that, okay, now I feel guilty, I will say something. I'll keep it short and simple, Kevin. Congratulations, you know, you and your mom. And I know you guys haven't quite been there 30 years, but plan on staying 30 more, then that would be great. We'll be back here doing this again, but congratulations.
Yeah, I'm coming up on 5:00 for me, so...
Right, right.
Councilman Harvey?
Yeah, Kevin, I really appreciate all that you've done in the community. I know every time there's an event or something going on, you're the first one to volunteer to help out whenever we need anything. You're there. We've had process items through the years, and you've been very helpful in making sure that that happened for the benefit for all businesses. And certainly, your work on the Chamber of Commerce has been really helpful, and I'm glad you're here and glad that you choose to stay in Kattati. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. I just kind of like to reiterate what the existing council said, that we do appreciate your support in the community and the things that you are doing. The transition from what Kattati's was, I mean, from what Spanky's was several years ago to what it is now is a welcome addition to the community to continue to grow and prosper. So, with that, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas, Kattati's local independent businesses help preserve the uniqueness of the city and give us a sense of community. Owner Kevin Ginger, a Sonoma State University alumni, has made Spanky's a family business. And whereas, Spanky's is a unique bar and nightclub that hosts open-mic comedy and live music weekly. And whereas, Spanky's offering of diverse musical entertainment brings people of all ages together, offering a sense of community. And whereas, Spanky's is committed to playing an active role in the Kattati community, including sponsoring Kattati's annual Oktoberfest and Blues Burners. And whereas, small businesses are a vital part of any city or town, not only because of their contribution to the local economy and workforce, but because of their commitment to the community in which they do business. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this 23rd day of June 2015 by the City Council of the City of Kattati that Spanky's Bar is congratulated for 30 years in business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, let me bring this down to you. Guys want to come down and get a picture?
Yeah.
Mr. Veritch?
Thank you, sir.
Would you like a public comment regarding a proclamation?
Yes, sir. I want to congratulate the owners of Spanky's for their hard work. And, you know, there are a lot of business owners in town who take over failing businesses and make the best of it. And it should be noted that it's a noble effort sometimes to do that, to make lemonade out of lemons and so forth. But I find it really interesting, you know, that the proclamations for businesses like this do come quite easily, you know, when they put up the right political signs around election time for city council. And there are bought-and-sold politicians in this town who know where their, you know, where their bread is buttered and so forth, and how to pay back political favors and so forth. But what I do find most interesting, if you look back at previous councils talking about the bars in town, there's been a lot of criticism that we have too many bars in Kattati. That criticism never came from me. But the fact is, if you look back at the record, there's been a lot of discussion when the bar owners were not in this room to take the heat from city leaders who felt that these bars were not paying their fair share in public services...
Mr. Veritch, is this regarding a proclamation?
Yes.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Stick to the proclamation.
This is about the proclamation. Okay, thank you, sir. And the fact is, the council was determining and discussing whether they could actually tax the bars an additional 25 cents per drink. Now, some of you remember that, some of you are here, some of you are not here, but this was spearheaded by Councilman Bob Coleman at the time. We had a lively discussion about possibly what we could do to tax the bars 25 cents per drink to help out Chief Stewart and the Police Department, take care of their expenses. So, it's interesting.
Get to the point.
I'll get to my point at the end of my three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Proclamation.
Yeah, about the proclamation. So, I'm saying is that we have an interesting history here about giving out proclamations out of one side of our mouth, while out of the other side of our mouth, we criticize the bars. And I think the council has some responsibility to maybe when the bars come forward, to give a little bit of history about what the city council's position have been on the bars. It has been a tough relationship over the years. And it hasn't been all sweet, and I can again congratulate the owners of Spanky's for doing a good job and being an asset to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Ginger?
I just want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, it's owner, singular, because it's just me. Second of all, when you talk about things like taxation and, you know, maybe there are too many bars, maybe there aren't, I know I pay sales tax, and I don't feel like the state board of equalization has any problem with my business, just because they tax me. And I think if there were some sort of discussion about how much the bars pay, or how much good or bad they do for the city, I don't see that as necessarily being a problem, or the fact that any of the council members or the mayors have necessarily had an issue with them. So, I think those are kind of separate issues, just from a bar owner and business owner's perspective.
Thank you. Do we have an approval of the final agenda?
Yes, no changes.
Okay. And now, we will open it up for citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are written, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. Mr. Veritch?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to bring our attention to the last city council meeting slash workshop, where Councilman DeLoso admitted on the record that he requested that the police chief provide stats on some crime stats. And I was listening to this on the podcast the other day. And I just want to remind the council, it's an easy mistake to make, that you can't do that. It was beaten into our brows when we were orientated to becoming city officials, that we are not supposed to talk with city staff members, other than the city manager. City Attorney Renowski took us to lunch, we heard it at convention, that the only people that we talk to, any questions that we have, any concern, get directed to the city manager. The only thing we are able to say to city staff is, "Good morning, good afternoon, hello." And at great pains, they express to us, we cannot go on fact-finding missions on our own and be using city staff time and resources on trying to find out information which may or may not be very, very, you know, appropriate to your job as city council member. I'm not criticizing the motive. I think, for the most part, council members' motives are generally in the right place. What I object to is people not reading their city council handbooks. So, let me, if you have your handbooks handy, let me point you to Section 2, page 35, about the First Amendment. A city official cannot suppress someone's speech merely because he or she does not like what they are saying. An official who does so violates the First Amendment and potentially puts the city and themselves personally at risk of liability for damages under Section 1983 of the Federal Civil Rights Act. Goes on to say, unless they disrupt a meeting, people can say just about anything at a city council meeting. A city can require speakers to stick to the matters relevant to city business. However, a subject is irrelevant if it simply has no bearing on the issue at hand, or matters within the jurisdiction of the city. Citizens may denounce city council members and call for their defeat. The Brown Act specifically provides that the city shall not prohibit public criticism of the policies, the procedures, programs, or services of the agencies, or acts or emissions of the legislative body. They will make personal, they may make personal attacks, to the extent that they involve city business. All comments in the meeting are absolutely privileged from my ability for defamation. I would ask the council, please, this was a free copy given to all of you. Take a look at it once in a while. This is a very important job you have in front of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any issues would like to address citizens' business?
Lisa Moore, 8592 Lakewood Avenue, former mayor of Kattati. I have an issue with the community garden next door to me. The issue I have is that Daily Axe and the City of Kattati and the citizenry of our neighborhood are not working together to make this community garden work. So, what's happening is, when Daily Axe has a walk that they are doing for the community, they come in and they clean it about three days before. And then, it's left about four or five months in between these kind of walks. When something dies, something gets replaced, it's very haphazard, there's no pathways, we've asked for a couple benches, there's a new person that takes over every so often through Daily Axe. They come and talk to me, they promised me the world. I talked to Suzie, I talked to Scotty, I can talk to the orange boy and girl. And nobody seems to be on the same page on this community garden. So, now, it's really starting to become an eyesore. And I really, now, I'm kind of at my wits' end, whether I go and clean it up, or they've let, like, there's thyme and mint and all these things that have just grown wild all through it now. So, I would like to have, if I could, some kind of plan with the city and Daily Axe and the neighbors to kind of all get together and kind of, instead of everybody from the outside coming in, maybe just all of us working together to try to get this resolved and maybe cleaned and maintained on a regular basis. So, that's kind of my issue. And I'm not the only neighbor that feels this way, I'm the only one that's coming, but I've heard from quite a few neighbors around that this is just becoming like kind of an issue. And like you said, every so often, there's maybe every six months, there's a new person, then I talk to it from Daily Axe, and it's just not really working, so... And if there's any more mulch put into this garden, the hill that's kind of grown up around our window, I can wave to these people while I'm having coffee in the morning. And so, it seems like every time they do a big push to weed, they put more mulch in. So, now, we have this big hill of mulch, and, you know, not that I don't like my neighbors, but I don't really want to engage with them every morning when I have coffee and read my paper. So, it's things like that that haven't been addressed, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to address the city council on citizens' business? Seeing none, I will close citizens' business. And we already addressed the future agenda items. Any conversation on consent calendar?
Move to approve?
Actually, excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would actually suggest one minor edit on Item 4 on the consent calendar. That recommendation has an extra zero on that number. The comma's in the right location.
Comma's in the right place, though.
But, yeah, it's intended to be 25,000, not 250,000, so, just want to make sure that was clear before you adopted it.
Somewhere, Mr. Moore is very disappointed. Mayor, public comment?
Regarding the consent calendar? Mr. Veritch?
Council, tonight, I'm objecting to the adoption of the city budget being put on the consent calendar. There has been no discussion about the upcoming budget, there's been no public discussion about the budget, there's been no public outreach about the adoption of this budget tonight. And no city...
Mr. Veritch, if I may interrupt you for a minute, the budget is not on the consent calendar, it's on the regular agenda. Item 9. Item 9.
What is Item 6?
Item 6.
There's an appropriation...
It's an appropriation line.
An appropriation limit, which is something that's done every year.
Okay, I thought it was the budget.
No, this is a routine matter that's done every year.
The appropriation limit is...
Got to read these things.
It's by the state.
Okay, so, there's confusion about this being the budget item?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else want to comment on the consent calendar while we're open? Okay, I'll close the public session on the consent calendar. Do we need to formally recognize that typo on there? Do we need to formally recognize that typo on there?
I'll move approval with that amendment, or I'll, I think we already had a motion out, didn't we? If you'll amend it, I'll second that.
I will amend my motion to delete the zero, and that amount should be 25,000 for item four.
Second.
And indeed, a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absent. Passes four zero. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to public hearings. I'll terms on that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and good evening, council. This item before you this evening is the nomination by the mayor of two qualifying members to the design review committee for a term ending December 31st, 2016, and that the city council adopted a motion to approve the mayor's nominations. We're actually filling two positions this evening. One is the qualified, the person qualified in the energy solar position, and the second position is the newly formed design construction position that the council passed this past, or adopted this past April. If the council recalls, the last appointment action that they took was in, was this past December, where we filled the, one of the licensed architects and one of the two, one of the two at-large positions. We also, at that time, had the energy solar position vacant, but we received no qualifying applications for that. So when we adopted the change to the municipal code to add the seventh position, we re-advertised for both of those. And happy to report that we received three applications in total, two of which are qualified for that energy position, and one that was qualified to hold the design construction position. So the table, the second table in your packet tonight shows you the makeup that would result from the appointment of any of the three individuals tonight. Unfortunately, on this particular evening, neither Mr. Slaven nor Mr. Connell could be with us. However, Dr. Lampert is here, if the council would like to address any issues of his background or learn a little bit more about his experience. The council could appoint either Mr. Slaven or Mr. Lampert to the energy solar position and still maintain both a residence of Kattati, so that the appointment of either of those two qualified individuals would maintain the majority resident qualification as well. So with that, I will conclude that short presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. At this point, I don't know that this is an item that needs to be opened up to citizens' business or not. Okay, at this point, I'll open it up to citizens' business if anyone has any questions or concerns they'd like to address. Okay, seeing none, I will close citizens' business. I don't--
The mayor's appointment, right?
Right. But he can, the vice mayor can get feedback from other council members if he'd like.
I would certainly like that.
Would you?
I would.
I'd be delighted to start that conversation.
Would you like to open that up?
Absolutely. It's great, actually, I think we didn't give a chance for Dr. Lampert maybe to come up and see if he has any words he'd like to share. So I would maybe recommend, if the vice mayor is interested in doing that, to open the public hearing back up for just him as a speaker, if he has a reason to come--
Dr. Lambert, would you like to come up and address the council?
There we go. Then I'll come back to my comments.
Well, good evening. I'm Carl Lampert, and I've been working in solar field for about, I think about 40 years now. And started out with Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory, when it was a daylighting program there. Done a lot of various interesting activities throughout the world, and energy efficiency and things like that. My own interest is low-energy buildings overall, and hopefully we can bring some of that to Kattati. And I'm very interested in design, too, so hopefully I can help with that. I have a doctorate, and I've been involved in engineering for quite a long time. My specialty is in coatings and photovoltaics and materials which either save energy, modulate energy, they're used for daylighting in buildings, whole variety of things in which you manipulate energy and control the amount of energy consumption in buildings. So I'm just, I'm a volunteer for this, and I have a little bit of time available. I think I can meet the requirements. So anyway, I'd like to be considered for the position. Any questions?
Council?
No, no questions from me.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and thank you for applying for that.
Close the public hearing.
Any further comments regarding public hearing on this? Then I'll close the public hearing on that. Councilman Delosso?
So, thank you for coming up and saying that. We just want to make sure you had the opportunity. I will say, I was a little concerned when I was first reading through your, I want to call it your resume, but it's really more like an essay. There's so much background and knowledge there. I was very concerned under membership and honors because I first, I read it too quickly, and I didn't have my reading glasses on, and I saw that you were a member of the Society of Vacuum Cleaners, and I quickly caught that. No, that's coders. There's a big difference. So--
I'm a vacuum cleaner.
You know, and, that's unfortunate, but maybe there'd be--
I guess that question's an elevator sometime.
I can imagine, I can imagine. So you certainly seem to be incredibly well-qualified for this position, and I think we would have a huge benefit having you on our design review committee. So thank you for applying.
Councilman Harvey?
Yes, I too was very impressed with your resume. It seems like you've done a lot, and I think that you would greatly benefit our community with the knowledge that you have. So I think that would be, if I was queen for a day and I got to make a choice, that would be my choice.
Councilman Lambert?
Well, we find ourselves in that wonderful situation where we actually have lots of good applicants for a position, so I'm really happy about that. And I was very impressed as well with Dr. Lampert's resume as I looked through it, and had I been asked to throw my hat in the ring first, I would have suggested him simply because of the strength of his resume, and clearly, efficiency is an important thing that we're going to see a lot more focus on, and I think his expertise will be very helpful as we move forward with some of the projects that might be coming to us in the next few years. So I'd be willing to support him in that position. And I also would be very pleased to support Mr. Connell in the construction position. Again, a really good background, looks very strong. This is, this is good for us, and I think it'll be very good for design review. So that would be my recommendation if the vice mayor chose to go that direction.
I also, I agree with Councilmember Lambert. I spoke with Mr. Connell when we were doing the general plan, and he had some really good insights. And when this came out, I kind of reminded him that, since he wanted to get involved, that this was an opportunity. So I was really glad to see that he applied, because he really made, did some very good research and pointed out some very good things when we were going through the general plan. So I think he'll be a great addition.
Thank you. Councilman Delosso, any questions regarding nominee?
Nothing further.
Again, thank you very much. I think your experience and your knowledge would be a great addition to the design review, and I appreciate your stepping forward. I would like to nominate Dr. Lampert and Mr. Connell for the two vacant positions on the design review committee.
Does this nomination count as a motion, or you deem a motion for that?
It would be good to have an actual motion, so perhaps Councilmember Harvey could move the nominations, and someone else could second.
I would move that we nominate Dr. Lampert and Mr. Connell for the design review positions.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lambert. If you let Mr. Connell know, he's now on the hook. And now we will go on to the number nine on the regular agenda regarding the adoption of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget. At this point, I would open this up to citizens' business, if anyone had any comments on there.
Mayor, your item nine?
Yes. Staff report?
Recognize me, sir?
I am.
Tonight's budget is one of the great and important things Kattati has to deal with a couple times a year. And I want to bring your attention back to the June 16th meeting on the budget workshop, where the mayor did not allow, well, the mayor allowed the city manager to go back to the 1960s regarding statistics and analytics, which were very appropriate, by the way. However, she prevented me from speaking to comparing budgets of just a few years ago with tonight's budget. And you were all witness to this, and I find it very telling that there's one set of rules for city staff, and there's another set of rules for, for citizens. I spoke on point, making a comparison to budget habits and budget procedures of just a few years ago, and why we almost went bankrupt, and why we had fiscal emergencies, because we, we overestimated anticipated revenues, and we underestimated future expenses. And we got into a jam, and the newspapers talked about it. We were the first ones to, you know, kind of cut the budget from the salaries from the employees and so forth, because we had to. We were broke. Robert Park had a little, had a little money in the bank. So, you know, we got to stop this playing favorites here, and, and stop this animosity towards public comment. And that's one of the reasons you don't see any public members in the room tonight wanting to come forward, is how you treat people when we try to come here and help. We try to bring our experience, our experiences with the city council, and our years of service, and public participation to help you, and it's not appreciated. And there's, and there's a couple letters, I believe there's a couple letters in the budget, in the, in your budget packet tonight, from Lori Alderman, who's asked many, many poignant questions about the budget. And I'm hoping you're going to address those tonight before you vote. There are some, there are some discrepancies with the budget numbers. She's brought them to your attention, and I think she deserves some, an answer, an explanation. And, you know, things have to change. If you want to get people participating in these meetings, you want them involved in the budget process, you're going to have to open up your minds, you're going to have to listen to reason and common sense, do a little research on some of the budgets in the past, and then go forward. Use that information to use your best judgment possible, and not just rely on city staff and the hocus-pocus that sometimes that they, you know, that subject you to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the budget?
Lisa Moore, 8590 Lakewood Avenue. I just want to say thank you for putting the rec. department back in the budget. I'm absolutely thrilled that you're going to be hiring somebody to do the rec. department in the fall. So that's one of my things that I know I've been pushing for, for the past couple years. I know my kids are now 16 and 19 and 25, so they're not going to be really affected by this, but I'm hoping for the younger kids at Thomas Page and the nursery schools around here will benefit from a renewed rec. department. And I'm willing to volunteer wherever I can, like I did with the last one, to get it up and running. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll close the public comment now. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Obed?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So the, the budget before you tonight is the product of a strategic, city council strategic planning session and two budget study sessions. And this budget is, is balanced for the sixth straight year, the general fund is balanced for the sixth straight year. It maintains the 25% reserve in the general fund that was set by council policy in 2009. And as was mentioned during citizen comment, it does add a recreation coordinator, which has been, is part of our, as we talked about, strategic planning, it's been a long-time goal of the council to try to restore some of those services that were lost during the recession. And it also includes significant capital projects, including our downtown project, which is otherwise known as the Gateway Project, as well as repaving and bike lane and crosswalk work through our old downtown. Those, those projects are partially funded by grants as well. We, in this budget, also include, included work for Floodie Ranch to try to provide some access to that piece of property. There's a water meter upgrade project, as well as an upgraded water main on West Kattati Avenue. Those are some of the significant projects that are included in the, in the attached budget. And a couple things I just want to point out. We have two, we have two assessments that we normally do, landscape and lighting assessments, and also the South Noma Business Park, limited obligation bond assessments. And those, those two assessments are still working their way through the process in terms of setting the actual assessment amounts, but those funds exist on their own, isolated from everything else we do. So the council will be seeing that in July, those two assessments, before we have to set them and send them to the county assessor for inclusion on the property tax rule. And then the other thing I just wanted to point out was, before you tonight were a couple of additional sheets, and there are the sheets, the summary sheets for the enterprise funds, as well as the CIP list. And the only thing that changed from what's in the published packet is, under the water meter upgrade project, the total, the total project amount is unchanged from what you have seen before in the study session. The only difference is that we got the final, the final cost split numbers from the contractor on that, and so we just updated this to include the final cost split. Otherwise, it's no different than what was seen in the enterprise budget study session. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Damian? Any questions from the council at this point?
I have, I have some comments, but I think I can, well, actually, we've already had public comments, so no questions, but I have a comment or two.
Councilman Lambert?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, first of all, very pleased to see this. Thanks. It's been a long public process, as it always is, and that's been very valuable. And I particularly want to thank the city manager for some extra effort. It was mentioned there were some very good questions from one of my neighbors, Ms. Lori Alderman, and I want to thank you for taking the time and copying me and emails, going through those point by point. I think the clarity that was involved in that was very helpful, certainly for the general public, and also frankly, for me, with even a better light in terms of particularly how we look at the use of reserve funds in various accounts, in terms of financing projects throughout town. Perhaps this is something that does need some help and explaining, because nowadays, we're used to things being bought on a credit card, whereas really, for cities, it's more of an old-fashioned thing of money sits up in reserve accounts and builds, and to the point you can actually afford to do something. So perhaps that is something that people are unaware of, and it's good that we had a chance to be able to explain that. So I'm very supportive of this, happy to see us have a chance to get on numerous important projects in the town, very pleased with the focus of spending on good municipal work and getting ahead, so supportive of that. Thank you for the effort.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city manager for this budget. It was clear, it was concise. You anticipated the questions that we would have and provided answers. I do appreciate, when I reached out, you know, about the questions from the public, you said, you know, you're on it, you know? Well, you'd work with Ms. Alderman to get her questions answered, so I appreciate that. I'm ecstatic that we are bringing back some recreation in this budget, because that's one of the things that was very sad when we had to cut that a while back, when we did all our cost cutting. And I'm glad to see that we are making some well-needed improvements in the community. We've saved and scrimped and, you know, kind of did what we could do for the last five or six years, and now it's nice to see some things happening in the city. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Delosso?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions and a few comments, and so I'm just going to start to rattle them off. I do appreciate you took the time to answer the in-depth questions that Ms. Alderman had. There was a number of them, I mean, in numerous emails that we saw. I have a question still on the downtown specific plan and the funding that is available for that, and I didn't bring the response that you had on, on Ms. Alderman's question, which I have in front of me. Could you kind of go back over the funding sources, at least, for that project, and what that full amount is, at least anticipated amount?
Sure. So the downtown specific plan project is, if you look in the, in the CIP spreadsheet, which was, it's unchanged from what you had seen before, but just to make sure you use the latest version, is the one that was supplemental, handout tonight. So the downtown specific plan area revitalization project has a total, a total contract amount of 2.6 million, and that's construction plus contingency plus construction management. And if you look across on that table, you can see that the, there's about a $1.1 million federal grant, that's part of that.
Right.
As well as some, some amount of gas tax money, some amount of transportation development funds, 140 there, so you see 30 and 140. And then if you follow that line across on the table, there's $400,000 coming in from the general capital outlay fund.
Right.
And then the remainder is the general fund.
Right, and I think--
General fund balance.
I want to kind of remember that her question, when she was here at the last meeting, was something about, when did that million dollars from the general fund get approved? And I'm just assuming that was part of the approval process, as we went through the whole strategic planning, and, you know, here are the costs of various projects. I'm assuming that would have been the point in time that was given direction. We've yet to approve a budget. Let's just be clear on that. That's potentially happening this evening, but, so, so I'm not quite sure what she was asking, I guess, at that point. And I don't know if it was clear to you from that question. It was just a little confusing about this extra million dollars that we have already approved, but we really haven't. Isn't that right?
The, so the contract award for the project was contingent on budget adoption, but it happened at the prior council meeting.
Right, 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 okay. That's, that was my understanding of it as well. And I do have a pretty clear idea of budgets. I've been running a, a small budget of, you know, one to $2 million a year. Last year, we lost our budget officer for half of the fiscal year, and I did step up and do that, so I actually balanced a $15 million budget. I have a pretty good idea of numbers and how they lay out, so I just wanted to make a statement along those lines, because it always seems like we don't really know what we're looking at, but I think we have a pretty good idea of what we're looking at. We also, I know Mr. Barich was starting to say during the public comment session of, of the consent calendar, that, you know, there were no public meetings and no public process, yet he admitted there was a June 16th meeting that he even attended, but we also had a meeting on June 16th. But we also had a meeting on June 2nd, right? So, we had two public budget study sessions that was open and attended by the public, all right? Just confirming that. Another comment I've been hearing too is, you know, promises that were made about Measure G. And I, I know words that came out of my mouth to the public were more along the lines of, you know, we were looking to bring on one or two police officers, um, one or two maintenance employees, and to do some street paving. Those were the three major points that really stuck out, at least in my mind, with Measure G funds. So, I, I didn't grab last year's budget, it's in my mailbox, but when I'm looking at the FTE allocation, which is full-time equivalents, that we have 16 sworn police officers and dispatchers, and we have an additional four FTE, three reserve officers, and one police service aide. So, to me, I'm thinking that's a little bit higher FTE than last fiscal year. And I don't know if you have numbers off the top of your head, I'm not really looking for them, but I'm pretty clear that already is a higher FTE than what we had last fiscal year in the police department. Is that, am I on the right track with that?
Compared to 1314, correct. Yeah. So, we adopted 1415, the one that we're just finishing up right now.
Right.
That was when the council authorized the additional police officer and some of the reserve.
Right. Okay.
With the passage of Measure G following that.
And then, I'm assuming, I didn't do the math on, on Public Works, but I'm assuming the same thing happened there. And I don't know if it was one or two positions, one position? Okay. All right. And I also think, you know, what's critical is, as, as these funds are now more, there are more funds available, I should say, really, the focus is not just on services to the community, but also on, um, critical infrastructure projects. And, and those are one-time costs, and some of them are huge. We know that. But I think putting those dollars to those kinds of projects is critical, because it's long-term support, um, not only for the, literally for the infrastructure, but for the city as a whole. You know, if you don't have well-paved streets and functioning streetlights and sewer mains that will carry that stuff, without that, you know, you're not gonna have a functioning city. So, um, I'm, I'm proud to say that, you know, six years running, there's no other city in the county that's had a balanced budget six years running. It's not magic. It's a lot of hard work. And there were times, when I first got back on the council, where the staff was seriously thin. We've gained a little bit of weight, we're not quite where we need to be yet, and, and, you know, hopefully in time, there'll be some more financial support to bolster up, you know, a larger staff, so we can offer even more services to the citizens. So, I'm, I'm done. I just, again, thanks for all the hard work on this, 'cause it looks really good. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm thrilled that we're in a position where we can actually do some of the things that we need to do in the community with this budget and what we're addressing and how we're addressing it. I like the fact that it appears to be much more transparent, and we're moving even to greater transparency, so that laypeople who don't necessarily understand budgets can actually understand what's going on here, and then that hopefully answers some of their concerns. Like John, I'm on a budget committee for an organization of, you know, a union, it's 60 million dollar budget. So, going through the budgets and then looking at these, um, these are much more easily read, I think, than a lot of standard budgets. So, I think that's great, and I really like the direction that we're going in some of the infrastructure things that we're supporting and bringing back staffing levels that we had at one point. Although, we are still trying to maintain some fiscal conservancy and not going overboard. I'm really excited about that, so. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it, and, um, and I do remember going to several budget study sessions on these, so. With that in mind, I'm looking for a motion. Oops, on the wrong page.
Hi. Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution approving the City of Catati budget for fiscal year 2015-16.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? And do we currently have any correspondence or pending legislation? Any correspondings or correspondence or pending legislation or anything?
No.
Okay. And the city manager's report?
So, we've talked a little bit about what's happening, or what's proposed to happen next fiscal year, which is all very exciting stuff. But, um, even as we close out this current fiscal year, we have some exciting things happening that I'll just recap on. So, um, as the council will recall, we had contracted with Siemens to do energy retrofits in the city facilities. And the intent of it was to change out light, primarily lighting, both street lighting, which hasn't occurred quite yet, but also building lighting, with the intent of, uh, the intent is to offset the cost of the project with the energy savings. So, it's sort of a net, you know, zero-cost project. And that's underway. So, I don't think it's happened in this room yet, but they're working their way through the city buildings right now. If you go to the classrooms, you'll see some new fixtures up there, and, um, they're a lot nicer than the, I don't even know what vintage those are, 1960s maybe, and certainly a lot more efficient. So, and actually, they provide more light, which is, which is a nice benefit as well. So, yeah, so that's happening currently, and then in July, mid-July or so, those decorative streetlights, city-owned streetlights are gonna start seeing their, um, their energy changed out, so that they'll have LED lights instead of the high-pressure sodium they currently have. And, um, so, people will notice a change. The, the existing high-pressure sodium streetlights are, they give off kind of an orange glow. The LEDs will give off a white light. So, it'll be a different look. It'll probably look, it'll probably appear to be a bit brighter, just because the white light just looks brighter than the orange light. And, um, those, so we have, the decorative lights are city-owned. There's also a variety of lights throughout town that are the so-called Cobra Head style, which are the ones that are taller poles with overhead lights. A lot of those are owned by PG&E, so we, we can't touch those right now, but maybe eventually, either through PG&E or through us, we can get to those ones. The other project that's going on right now that you may have noticed is the Kater basketball court, the council's approved. All the fencing is missing, and they're replacing that right now. And the first week of, actually, the, I guess, the first full week of July, after the July 4th weekend, they're gonna be resurfacing that court. So, it's gonna, it's gonna look really nice shortly and be a lot more usable than it has been over the last couple of years. And then, um, one other project that I think we've been talking about for a long time is the web streaming project. Our city clerk, Tammy, had a pre-construction meeting today with the contractor, and that's gonna be happening starting tomorrow. So, I expect by the next council meeting, which would be in, you know, the end of July, we'll have all the web streaming equipment tested and in place and operational. So, that's pretty exciting. And, um, hand-in-hand with that was the, uh, the new web portal that shows all of our city council meetings and planning commission and design review, which is also live currently. It just went live this last week, so, um, Tammy's, she can't hoop and holler right now, but she's very excited about it. It's, and it's, it'll be a lot more usable for, for citizens that wanna, you know, look at our upcoming agendas and search for past agendas compared to what we had before. It's, it's a huge improvement. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say that, you know, on a bit of a, bit of a downer note, there was a large funeral in Catati last weekend. I think most people read in the paper, there was a, there was a girl from Wona Park and a large group of Irish exchange students, I believe, that were in Berkeley, and they were involved in a porch collapse. Anyway, the, um, the, um, the young girl from Wona Park, her family had a service at St. Joseph's. And I, I only bring it up because there was an extremely large event. It filled up the entire St. Joseph's parking lot, as well as the Caltrans park and ride lot. And there was a large contingent of Irish dignitaries. Apparently, people flew in from Ireland, and it was a big deal. Our, um, our police department responded quickly and worked with the church and put together a traffic control plan, and, um, it went extremely smoothly. They, what happened was when the event let out, they closed St. Joseph's, 'cause St. Joseph's, even on a normal mass day, can be a mess, getting out of there onto Old Redwood Highway. So, they closed St. Joseph's, and they directed all the cars down West Catati to, to Olaf or to William to get, have quick access out. And it went smoothly, and the media was cordoned off in a designated area, which the, which worked well for the family. The family had requested that the media is not, you know, in the church and right up in their, you know, in their face during this time. So, it was, it went very well, and our police department did a great job, so I just wanted to say that on short notice. It was, it was a job well done. And with that, that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I just wanna make a comment on the web portal. It was fantastic for me to be able on Thursday night to read through my whole agenda packet, where normally, I wouldn't be able to get down here until Saturday. And it was great to have a jump, and so, it's, it's a very easily laid-out, you know, the format is really good, and from a public's perspective, just going to the, the meetings, look at the agenda, look at the full packet, and it saved me a ton of time. So, I still came down Saturday morning to get the hard copy, of course, but it was really great to get it well in advance like that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is being a little temperamental tonight, we'll see if it wants to stay on. Going back to the efficiency program with Siemens, I, I just wanna check, I'm sure we have something in place designed to measure outcomes against engineered estimates. Love to hear back on that when we get that in place, 'cause I have a feeling, given the nature of the estimation, we're gonna be, do much better than was probably estimated, so I'd like to hear a little bit how those numbers pan out first, because I think that's a very good thing. I think we get a look at that, that'll give us some support for future efficiency projects like that throughout the community, 'cause I think, as there's more and more investment, more and more development in that, in that area, we're gonna find more to do. At this point, maybe this was what panned out, but I have a feeling in the next year or so, that will change. So, anyway, love to hear that news when it comes. Secondly, just a quick thanks to one, to our city clerk for dragging me kicking and screaming into the 21st century, whether I wanted to go there or not, with the web portal. Very nice, very helpful, and in all seriousness, works very nicely. And also Chief Parrish for putting together traffic control for that incident, giving the sadness of the event and knowing the danger of traffic coming out of St. Joseph's. I'm glad we had the prescience to put that together and make sure that we didn't add to something that's already a seriously tragic event. So, thank you for that effort.
Thank you. And I don't have any comment. Thank you for your, uh, report, and, um, I'd like to open up the citizens' business, or the public comment regarding city manager's report. Mr. Berich?
Thank you, sir.
File means.
I'd like to speak briefly about the telecasting project that's coming forward. You know, it's been 13 years since Comcast gave us some $36,000 to televise, cable cast, and video-record these meetings, um, some years ago, and we sat on that money all those years. So, it's nice to see it finally coming, but 13 years is a long time to keep the public in the dark, who could not make it to these meetings, the shut-ins, the elderly, the people with kids who wanted to watch government and see it, and they couldn't. So, it's a long time coming. Also regarding the, uh, the basketball courts, in all the years I've been coming here, I don't think I've heard one citizens come here, citizen come here and ask for the, the basketball courts to be renovated. But I've heard dozens of kids come here asking for a skateboard park, dozens, over and over again, year after year, and they're met with silence. That was a perfect location for a skateboard park, and again, the kids have been ignored, and their requests have been ignored. Also regarding the Siemens project that the city manager pointed out, it is not a zero-cost project. We're not gonna argue that again tonight. I remember all the fuzzy math and the analytics done on it and so forth, but we're never gonna save enough money from the faulty water meters out there to replace each and every water meter in town with brand-new units. It's not gonna happen. Just like some of these anticipated revenues that have been talked about in the budgets over the years, it ain't gonna happen. Lowe's was never gonna bring in a million dollars a year. And regarding the budget, I see nothing, you spoke on the budget tonight, about the city's unfunded liabilities. There are many articles written about this in periodicals, and sit in Catati again is not addressing the unfunded liabilities. And tonight is the night that the council discussed the final budget. Tonight was the public hearing, not the workshops, when the numbers were being moved around, when questions were being formulated by the council to bring tonight. Workshops are workshops. Tonight was the final public hearing and discussion for you to bring your concerns forward, your questions, to debate the issues about the, the budget, and tonight we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification on the Siemens project. Right now, we were just talking about the lighting, we weren't talking about the water meters, were we?
Just lighting.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we could go further on that one?
Absolutely.
Heaven forbid, we certainly wouldn't wanna argue about this, but I will actually agree, this is probably not going to be a zero-cost project. We will be, in fact, running ahead of this once we're through the period, and that was gone through very clearly with a fine-toothed comb, so I just wanna say that, because well-done efficiency programs actually in the real world do that nowadays, so wanted to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. Now, we're to the city council reports. Amen.
I have nothing.
Thank you. I just wanted to report that the Jazz Festival seemed to be a resounding success that was just held last Saturday, albeit light. It was a very nice crowd, it seemed to go well, and many of the other downtown merchants also participated from, I believe, 4 o'clock on. So, that seemed to go very well. And then, um, prior to adjourning, I would like to dedicate the council meeting tonight to Olivia Burke and Ashley Donahue and the other students that passed away in that tragic accident in Berkeley. And, um, then we will adjourn to closed session, and we'll reconvene in about 5, 10 minutes. Thank you.